Good evening. I like the call that Wednesday, October 9th, 2024 Douglas Plan and Board meeting to order. Time is 7:02. Quick roll call around the table for minute take of our attendance. Jacob Schultzberg here.
Meg Schlesman here.
Aaron Sokrat here.
Mike DeRose here.
Jake Anottic here.
Mike Greco here.
Mike Suckar here.
Lot of likes.
Matthew Benoit, Director of Community Development, here.
Okay, and Mr. Preston and Mr. Marx excused. Just a reminder for everyone, just try to keep your voice up for the recording and all those in the audience so everyone can hear you. A and Rs. We have one A and R for 72 Martin Road, possible votes. Mr. Dunleavy. Just name and address, sir, for the-
Yeah, Dunleavy, 72 Martin Road.
Okay. Just a brief synopsis of what's going on.
I'm just buying a wedge of land off of my current neighbor to, in case I want to put an addition on my garage, I'll have the setbacks I need.
Okay. Mr. Benoit?
Yeah, so we have a discrepancy on the plan. I'm touching this tonight. So, in the zoning table, it reads, on the plan, it reads it's in the zoning district of R2, with the dimensional requirements there for R2. But if I could share my screen, let's see that. You see that, the, okay. Okay, you can't see the zone. I gotta move the zoom out of my way so I can see. All right, so the village residential district is where the frontage lies, and this is the subject property. They're both listed on the field card as RA. I think it makes sense that 70 Martin Road is RA because that's a maturity of lot, but where the frontage meets village residential, I think that should apply to this case because the wedge of land is mostly in village residential. So, if this were to meet the village residential setbacks, I mean, the frontage on a public road is 100 feet. It definitely meets that. It's a passable public way. I don't have any issues with this at all. It's just if the planning board wanted to motion to endorse, we could endorse it, but we'd have to sign the amended plans at a later date. And I understand that there's to be a closing in between now and our next meeting, which might help the applicant out if we're to come to the town hall and sign this once the plans are modified.
Okay.
Doesn't affect the actual layout. It's just the table that's an issue.
Okay. Yeah, I have no issue with the sketch of plans going on. Just the discrepancy just needs to be fixed.
So you're saying, excuse me, through the chair, you should say VR versus R2?
Right. VR with the right zoning dimensions, and those are for 100 square, 100 feet of frontage, 50 foot setbacks.
Yes, less restrictive.
Yes, very much so.
That's fine.
Yep. I'll get that done the next day, too, for most.
As soon as I get those in, we come in. I just need four members to come in and sign.
Yeah, just have Jen send an email when it's ready and-
Yep.
Try to get four, at least four members in.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions from the board? All right. So the language for the motion.
As amended, would that be as amended?
Yeah.
So you need a motion to endorse the A and R for 72 Martin Road as amended?
Yes.
To be signed at a-
Signed at a later date by the board.
Yeah. Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
All right.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Wicker, second by Mr. Sokrat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. In unanimous? We'll be in touch with you then. Thank you.
So you brought the muscle with you?
What, with a cane?
Almost. Get me that point.
Yeah, it needs to have the table.
I'm looking for the wheelchair.
I'll send you a little email on it just to see if it has it.
There's a special parking at it. Yeah, oh yeah, special needs.
Okay. Moving right along, public hearing, 7:00 PM public hearing, continued SNL Realty Trust, application for site plan review and special permit, SPR-240904 and SP-240904 off Davis Street, possible votes. Mr. Spironi, how are you?
Good thanks.
All right.
Good evening, Mark Allen with Allen Engineering here as well.
All right. Who should we start with? Mr. Allen? Okay. We'll go right to you, Mr. Allen.
Absolutely. Yeah, if I can, I'm going to share my screen just to go over the changes that have been made based on the peer review. Quinn, Kevin Quinn Engineering, you may recall at the last hearing, issued some peer review comments. We were able to address those. And he, I don't believe Kevin has had a chance to respond, but I just kind of want to go over for the board what the additions and maybe modifications to the plan have been.
Okay.
So I've circled in red, I don't know if you can see that screen, I've circled in red the notes in the areas that we've sort of highlighted. The discussion at the last hearing was that the first 40 feet off of Davis Street is to be paved, to have a paved apron. And we've added that paved apron and a dual gate that Mrs. Spironi had mentioned at the last hearing that he's going to install after the paved area. Then we pushed the gravel riprap tire scrubber back beyond that area. So we're going to have pavement just off the edge of Davis Street, and then the 40-foot tire scrubber after that. Based on what Kevin's comments, we've also made a low point at the intersection of the gravel and the pavement so as to not bring any stormwater onto Davis Street. Other additions, we've noted the portable toilet that was mentioned. Because this is a unique situation, there is no buildings, no internal plumbing, plumbing, so Rob Spironi has agreed to put a portable toilet somewhere on the premises for use for himself and maybe with, maybe one other folks that may be there. Other items that we added were, we revised the grading of the flat area on top so as to create a minimum of 2% slope in all areas. One of Kevin's, Quinn's comments were, was regarding the possibility of puddling if the area is too flat. So we've made, we just showed additional spot grades to show that a 2% slope is going to be consistent throughout the compacted gravel pad. I think another one of his questions was in regard to the slope of the access drive. At the very end of the access drive last time, it was, showed to be about 11%. We've been able to regrade that access drive to anywhere in between 6% and 7% to make it a lot gentler. We've also added construction details per Kevin's request of the compact gravel area and the paved entrance off of Davis Street. So if the board has any other questions regarding the minor revisions, we have issued the set of plans. And I believe Matt has them in the office now and maybe in front of you tonight.
Okay. Yeah, these will be updated ones.
Yep.
Okay. Start with you, Mr. Benoit. Any follow-up on your end?
I just need Kevin to verify the changes on his end, confirm his peer review letter. But just wanted to see if the board had any comments in response to the amendments, and if the board had any other further questions or requests of the applicant at this time. Otherwise, recommend continue so we can get Kevin's response.
Board, any questions or comments with the plans that were just described?
I think it was addressed.
Yep. Just wait for peer review to confirm and continue. Anything from you, Mrs. Spironi?
Nope.
Any comments?
Looks good. I like the paved entrance.
This is what you do.
This is what you do. It's good.
And thanks for putting the portable toilet on there. I know you have some neighbors you're friends with, but it just helps us and helps the plan out, so. All right. When is our next meeting?
23rd.
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 I know not many people here, but anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, or concerns with what's been addressed?
23rd.
And all I see is Mr. Allen online. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to continue this public hearing to October 23rd, 7:15.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mrs. Wicker, second by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
In unanimous? All right. We'll see you on the 23rd.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Getting my bearings straight here.
You must have a little better.
Yep. So we have a additional business open letter, open space letter to Plenum Board. It's in our packet. I'll just read it. Plenum Board, 290 Bull Street. Thank you for allowing representatives from the Douglas Open Space Committee to explain the Community Preservation Act, CPA. Now that it is on the ballot for November, we would like, we would greatly appreciate a brief note of support if you are in favor of its inception in 2025, as well as a yes vote on question six. Along with similar notes from the Board of Selectmen and the Conservation Commission, your endorsement would help us promote the CPA with the full support of town officials. Again, thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely from Sue Perkins. So the committee is just looking for our support.
I'm a nay, so.
If you'd like, pull something up on the Zoom.
It's an article that was published in the New York Bridge Times, talking about the details of the CPA, but I'll kind of go right to the table just so you can see it. These are some of the numbers that would come from the-
Through the chair to Mr. Benoit, is this mandated by state?
It's on the ballot.
But is it mandated, like, things that-
No.
No, it's not like MS4.
Not at all.
Personal preference of town to town.
Yep.
Some towns have it, some towns don't.
You're summable, you wish you had.
I'm just not in favor of more taxes.
Through the chair to Matt. North Precipitous, correct?
I think so.
Nobody here.
Nope. So the Open Space Committee is asking for a motion of support. We either make a motion of support or we don't make a motion at all. It's entirely up to the board. Conservation Commission voted to support it at their last meeting, but it's conservation.
Yeah, I fully support it going to the voters and letting the voters decide. Kind of like, my view, I don't, I don't want to sway one way or another, but it's completely up to the voters.
Through the chair, it seems as though we have a kind of a lack of support for it as a board.
We're also missing two members, too, tonight.
This has been brought up before when a member was here. This has been brought up previous time. And at that time, if we even go back a minutes, was, I thought, pretty sure it was unanimous, no, on it back then? That was a few months ago. Now they're bringing it back up to us again, second time. So I don't know what's going on here. But I'm just speaking for myself.
Nobody showed up.
Through the chair, through the chair. Who relegates, delegates these funds if this goes through?
It would establish a community preservation coalition.
And that would be appointed members or-
Yes.
From various boards or just that would be a new formation?
I think it's, I think it'd be set up by the selectmen.
I think they would probably look for one member from each-
Yeah, it's more like curiosity if it's going to be somebody from each board. Is it going to be appointed members of the community?
Yeah. And my understanding, too, is-
Funds if it so goes through.
The committee comes up with the recommendations, but at the end of the day, it's up to town meeting to vote on if one is-
Yeah, I'm just curious if this does go through on how these funds are going to be dispersed and decided upon.
Well, we can certainly, it doesn't seem like it's going to be unanimous in support, so.
But it's on the ballot, so it's going to go to move anyway. So regardless of what we say.
Correct.
So if we take no action, it doesn't really change the trajectory of this vote, you know, by town.
Yeah.
More of no action.
All right. Do you want to call for a motion of support, see if you get one?
All right, yeah. Well, we can do it in a positive and do a roll call, too.
Yeah.
So-
Puts us in front of our peers, doesn't it, all the people we know?
So I'll entertain a motion for the Plenum Board to issue a letter of support for the CPA for the upcoming election.
So moved.
Motion made. Is there a second?
Who?
Okay.
Well, a second. So the motion doesn't make it.
Right. Paris Street Extension Road Improvements, discussion. Have you heard any?
I did not hear back from them. I'm inclined to take this off the agenda until we hear something from them.
Yeah. I think they had a lot of research doing.
Yep.
Mr. Preston's not here, but master plan, has there been?
Yeah.
I know I did the survey. The survey's out.
Yeah, the survey's been out. It's on, it's on the website. It's on the community development page. It's also on the main page. So folks can use a QR code on their phone and take the survey on their phone, or there's paper copies at the library, town hall, and the Doug Social Center. Doug Social Center copies went already.
Oh, wow.
Folks are already grabbing those, so we're going to be delivering more tomorrow.
Okay.
But there's already a couple in the box filled out, but CMRPC is going to be circulating more of those, and then Master Plan Committee meets again next week.
And there's an open house coming up, too, right?
Yep. That workshop is-
14th, I thought.
I always forget the date.
Isn't it the 14th?
I think you're right.
November?
November 14th, here at Town Hall.
Yep, Thursday.
November 14th, yeah.
What time?
Yep.
I think it starts at 5:00.
Yep.
Goes for a couple hours. Individual workshops set up like a charrette with just different stations. You can learn about the different chapters.
It says 13.
Is that, does a lot of people from CMRPC come and put that on? Okay.
Yep. They handle each of the stations and-
Different meeting, Mike.
They're pretty fun, actually. You get a lot of input from different people in towns. Depending on the turnout, we might be in the gym, we might be in this room, we might be in the community room, we might even be in the hallway. We're not sure. We've kind of reserved the entire building. So not sure what we're going to get just yet.
Was there a booth at Oktoberfest?
Yeah, there was. Yeah, there's a booth at Oktoberfest. I haven't heard anything, any feedback from it yet. From what I understand, it went pretty well, but that's all I've heard just from onlookers. I haven't heard it from CMRPC yet. But yeah, they did set up a booth there, which is pretty nice.
Okay. All right. Ongoing development. Do we have any updates or anything from any of these projects?
There's two. Whiten Heights has submitted for their road acceptance. They have a public hearing with the select board on Tuesday. Sleepy Hollow has also submitted theirs. Their public hearing was not scheduled yet, but it will be shortly. And there's also William Drive, which I'll add to this, which also submitted for their road acceptance. We have three road acceptances that we reviewed at our last meeting. It'll be hopefully on for the spring town meeting, Warren.
Whiten's the main one, is to clean up, correct?
Yep, and they still have to do all that.
Yeah.
Yep.
That is going to be-
He also needs to pay his taxes.
So that, is that going to be closely monitored so it doesn't slip in? Okay.
Absolutely.
And this, so they don't get it slipped in without having that all done?
Oh, yeah. I'm all over that. There's a resident who's all over it as well, so.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yep.
And as the meeting comes closer, too, they'll be meeting with the selectmen. It's on them. So the checks and balances are going to be there.
Yep.
All right.
I have a quick question. Remember was brought up about the post office light for the mailbox? And whatever was accepted, we're going to try to have maybe the same moving forward? Did we ever find out what they put in so that whenever that happens, from now on, we don't have 40 different arrangements?
That's good.
Remember the conversation was made that way, so the highway department, right?
Yeah, they said they installed the light after they talked to Adam, but I'll get the specs on it so we can-
So that that, for in the future?
Yeah.
Anything that comes in front of us that requires a mailbox, would have at least the same lights. So when the town receives these roads?
Sure.
We don't have 40 different lights throughout the town? We got one?
Talk about a stamp.
Tried to at least, right?
Main ticket.
And it was brought up, and I never heard back on any follow-up on having that and getting into our verbiage when it comes to the mailbox area, to say, cease back ABC, or whatever it might be. That way there is uniform.
I'm sorry, Andy has a copy of what he purchased.
There's also an opportunity for us to start looking into updating our subdivision regulations, some of the items that we want to discuss there. I can propose some items for us to consider for a public hearing, possibly at our next meeting, if you want. There's a few things in here that I haven't taken notes on over the last three years that we could consider.
And that doesn't have to be a public hearing to go to town meeting, those are our own?
No, it's a public hearing for us.
Okay, but it doesn't have to go to town meeting?
No.
Just because it's our regulations?
Yep.
Yeah, because times are changing.
Oh, yeah.
Some of the laws are changing.
Yep. We definitely need an R factor. I know I've mentioned this kind of when I first started, but there's an equation that makes it so you can't create all these spidery-shaped lots that are just nightmares for folks in their private property disputes and all that, so.
And the other thing that we're supposed to discuss, because it came up in the Douglas Roadways.
Yeah.
What are we going to do? We're going to have it where, you know, this subdivision is 15 feet, this one's 20 feet, this one's 30 feet, this one's 18 feet.
Yep.
We're going to make it so they're all the same.
Yeah, all we have is a right-of-way width, but we don't-
That's it. We have absolutely nothing.
Right.
So it always becomes an argument over what's what.
Yep.
Put it in black and white. Make it so that this is what it is.
Yep. Yep, that's definitely in here. I got a few other notes in here that I need updates to, so. There's a bunch of stuff.
Yeah, if you want to start drafting up some-
Okay.
Something on-
Items for us to consider for a public hearing.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, I'd do that.
A night like this would be a good time to go over some of them.
If you want, I could. Community mailbox, parking. That's one thing. I talked about parking and being able to pull over into the mailbox, a bump out. That's one thing.
I think we require, or we ask for what, two spots at least?
Two.
I think it was, depends on the size, but at least two spots to get off the road.
Well, the contents of the definitive plans should add cut, fill, and analysis and earth removal quantities. It's not, not part of the requirement for some reason.
Put the road within.
And also on that mailbox was where it's located, because we had an issue once where it was on somebody's front yard.
Right.
And then we asked the developer to make its own separate spot for it, so it's not anybody's property.
Instead of put on a border of two properties at the, you know-
But even that, it became an issue.
It was too close to somebody's, has to be a certain distance from driveway, too, on someone's property. It shouldn't be just like, you know, 10 feet off their driveway.
There's also for residential compounds, we should ask them to also submit a conventional plan option, so we can look at both options and then decide on one, right? Even though folks have been doing that voluntarily, it's not a requirement in here.
Yep.
Criteria for review and approval. Yeah, there it is. Applicants should submit a conventional lot layout plan as part of the, that's the same thing. And I circled the roadway width on these, what's it, it's compound, right?
Through the chair.
Compound. It's talks about minimum width is 16 feet, minimum right-of-way is 30 feet.
For the compound?
Yeah, that's for the compound. It's supposed to be more like a common driveway, but-
Through the chair to Mr. Benoit.
Yeah.
There was one talk, one time, because I know you come from towns that you worked for that had particular dimensional, you know, sort of requirements on A and Rs.
Yeah.
That they can't be, you know, this width to nothing, and then it goes up like that.
Yeah.
You know, we should have some sort of creating, some reasonable standard of something.
That's the irregularity factor.
Yeah.
It's an equation that goes in. It's complicated.
I mean, I will say that I received one of those where it was 40 feet in for somebody, and then it went over to their property, and then it went up, and-
Yeah, and all the backland in the back.
Oh, yeah.
It looked like a moose's stamp or whatever.
Can that R factor be applied to A and Rs?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
That would be great.
Yep.
Almost like a non-conforming lot.
Yep.
Correct? Or on the roadway, where we have it, if it's narrower than 200 in our way, RA, you need a 150-foot circle or something like that for the rent and-
Yeah, for hammerhead lots. We've done things like that before, but that's a zoning bylaw.
We'll take that.
Yeah.
24-foot roadway width is what I put in here.
24?
Yeah.
Is that for public accepted roads?
Yeah.
Is that what, okay.
I think that's what we talked about.
For paved road?
Right. Minimum right-of-way is 60 feet.
Okay, so that's the difference.
That's what you're just thinking about, is 24?
Right.
Right now?
Yep.
Have to go measure.
Said we need 20-foot width for the apparatus, at the very least. It's one of the things that we talked about.
Correct. So your wide vehicles are eight foot six, not including mirrors, just so you know.
Yep.
That's the width.
It's like 11 feet, idiot minimal for each side.
Then in the winter time and/or you have a plow, which are normally around your nine feet and stuff.
Yeah.
Even over like where you live, your two plows come together. If one ain't stopping, you kiss them blades.
Yeah.
So even 24 feet can be on the narrow side, or even delivery trucks and oil trucks and all that, you know, meeting them, you know, 24 isn't, people think it's huge. It's not. It really isn't.
Especially if you have, what type of-
Not at all.
It's a California curve that you got to get up on it, but if it's an arc curve, you know, you don't have any route to move, you know?
Right, so I mean-
It's not to consider means for alternate transportation, like even bike lanes, sidewalks. You have to consider those as part of the right-of-way as well. For the police to-
Well, we're talking paved area, not right-of-way.
Yeah.
Cars.
Yeah. Well, bike lane's part of that.
What's your experience?
I haven't really implemented a bike lane yet, but that's something that's been-
No, I meant just for the vehicle, like, you said 24. Do you think 28 is better or 30 is better, or what is it to, it's a 60-foot right-of-way.
Pushing it. 26 is as big as I've seen.
Okay, well, we should take 26. But anyways.
I mean, 26 would even be better than the 24.
Oh, yeah.
All right, I just put 24. Well, that's what we talked about previously.
Well, that's, but we can-
I wanted 30, but we didn't shut down.
All right. And then street trees not to be located between the sidewalk and the road.
Correct.
That's something that is on here.
It's an irony thing.
Yep, that was definitely an irony thing.
Mm-hmm.
That's most of what I have so far. Streetlights. Yep, we talked about, yeah, street lighting. Oh, stormwater easements. They're easements on people's properties. Should they not be their own lot transferred to the town instead of an easement?
No.
Right? Because when the, when the, when the drainage basin comes over to the town, we have to get permission from the owners to access the easement. If it's its own lot and transfers with the roadway, we don't need their consent to get to it.
But a lot of them, it's hard to get to them.
Right, and that's just it. They'll have to be designed so we can get to them and get around them. They come with the lot and the ability to get around them.
You're getting in a tricky area there.
The language when it's developed doesn't have it, so maintenance can be done without-
Yeah, you're supposed to be able to get 10 feet around the basin.
No, you need to notify.
Right.
You just can't go walking in.
Yeah, but if it's a 60-foot right-of-way and the road is 28?
Yeah.
It's still going to leave you 15, 16 feet on either side for right-of-
You're talking about retention.
The basins.
Basic water.
That are off the property.
A lot of them are in people's backyards.
Yeah, they're in backyards of people's property.
And stuff like that. You just don't go walking in. It'd be a rude awakening.
Those, right, and that's just it. Like, those are on their property.
Correct.
Right now. That's the way we do it. If they were on their own separate lots, we don't need their permission to access it.
The problem is this, now you could be making a lot non-conforming, because now you're taking- you're taking property away from people, now you just changed all the property rights.
You're saying in layout, though.
Right, in the layout.
Conception.
Right.
Not after.
A lot of it is done after the fact.
No, this would have to be proposed with the plan, with their design.
Okay, if you do it that, I'm just saying, there's been a lot of this that went on.
Oh, we're not gonna change anything.
After the fact.
Yeah, we're not changing anything that's already done.
You're talking about new?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
We can't change anything after the fact, it's already done, but.
How would that work, though, with, they would submit the plan?
Yeah.
They would own it up until the town accepts it, so then they would have to go and.
And transfer.
Transfer the.
Right, we'd transfer that lot with the road, yep. Right now, they're transferring the easement as part of someone else's property, and the other folks are using that as part of their lot, they end up getting the baitment on it anyway, but it's kind of, it's harder to sell those houses that have the.
I was gonna say.
Right? That's a lot harder to do.
On new construction, I'm one hundred percent with you.
Yeah, that's really all I'm talking about.
Yeah.
That's good, so.
So in other words, what it is, is the developer's gonna have to lay out the lots and keep almost like a lot separate to go to the town for the water discharge and all that, that way there, it's not affiliated with anybody's personal property.
Exactly.
It could be a lot that was smaller, right? We wouldn't put the same requirements on it as a regular lot.
Right, it wouldn't need to be conforming.
Right.
It would just be a lot as of whatever's required.
Whatever's required.
Do and have access.
Yep.
It's never gonna be a buildable lot or nothing ever.
Right.
So it could naturally fall out of their stormwater plan?
Yeah.
And, you know, the whole, they're gonna have options of whether they're gonna do conventional or whatever.
Hmm.
You're gonna have to plan for it anyways.
And the flex development that do open space, that's a zoning bylaw, it's a different thing that we need to tackle at some point, but the flex development, they're given the open space, but they're giving us all the unusable open space, nothing that we can access, the access is two dimensions, and that doesn't give us access to the, one of the things that the flex needs to add, access for usable open space that we could use for any sort of recreational purpose.
And not landlocked either.
Right, even if there's an area for parking or something that you can get a trail in there or something.
I mean, that's just as important as open space.
Yeah, exactly.
That is it.
Yeah, we're just getting all the wetlands and the unusable parts when we get to.
Side of the mountain.
Right, yeah.
So could we have it set up in that, whenever any land is be transferred, a requirement for parking spaces in an area for people to park to go and enjoy that area?
Yeah, be a zoning bylaw amendment.
All right, so why don't we work on something on that aspect? And then the other thing is, do we have it in there, we're making it where we had to tie in water lines, or have a access in and out so that they weren't closed looped? And we ran into trouble on a few where there aren't people there getting easements on people's property, correct?
Yep.
Should it be set up the same as your water retention ponds where it's not an easement, it's town property?
That's a little trickier, because we don't know where that's gonna come in from, right?
Well, what it is, is when the development is made, you know where it's gonna go out from.
Yeah.
You know that, okay, we're taking between this lot and this lot, we're putting a pipe going that way.
Right, and if it's gonna loop into the back into something.
Of the next one coming in.
And we don't know where that is, at least the water department doesn't have a chance to weigh in on that yet.
No, but the water going out, that'll full access to that pipe.
Yeah, I see what you're.
And the new development coming in, we'd have to give access to that area to connect to that pipe.
Yeah.
Through the chair, Matt, who owns the pipes currently right now? Who's if they fail, who owns it?
If the town takes it on, it'd be the town.
No, currently.
The town.
Which subdivision?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Even if it's on someone else's property.
Yeah, the easements usually transfer with the road, and the access to the easements remain is by the town for the water, and sometimes even the electrical, it's underground utilities.
So either way.
Yeah.
Well, we're trying to make so all the water lines are on continuous loops on any development that comes in. That way there's no deadhead.
We were just talking about that, I was gonna add to the flex.
Parking.
Thank you. Parking for open space.
And accessible open space.
Yep.
Usable.
Parking here. I was gonna talk about lighting briefly, do we want to require subdivisions to do underground wires, Douglas, like, instead of the overhead utilities? I know it's more expensive, but it's starting to become more of the trend because overhead lines are getting taken down with trees and all that, so.
Yeah, it makes sense. I've been doing that for a long time.
Yeah.
Saves money over.
All undergrounds.
You don't see many new developments putting in poles, like, what's what's underground now?
I don't know if there's a requirement, though.
Is the lighting. It's a good plan. Lighting.
That helps with winter plowing and two vehicles passing, things like that, too.
Maintenance over.
What do we require? Every corner must be illuminated?
Not that we have any guidance on lighting at all.
Should we?
Well, if it's underground, you can't put a telephone, you can put a street lamp.
Yeah, probably a street lamp.
Yeah, I don't think there's any guidance on lighting in here, somewhere subdivision went in without lighting at all. Some staff saw that, so. I don't think there's anything in here for.
That's a fifty-fifty call.
Yeah.
Leave it up to the developer and.
Well, anything in here would be, they can request waivers.
Yeah.
If it's in there, then they can, yeah, but at least it's in there.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you don't wanna light it up like a Christmas tree, but I would think intersections.
Yeah, intersections usually.
Should be illuminated, you know what I mean? And intersection in a subdivision shall have one light pole for illumination.
Says adequate street lighting shall be provided of a design subject to approval by the planning board. Before that, it reads underground distribution systems shall be provided for any and all utility services, including electrical and telephone services. It doesn't specifically say street lighting. Then the next sentence says adequate street lighting shall be provided of a design subject to approval by the board. This kind of separates it out right there.
Says a lot.
Yeah, I just don't say, I don't think it says that street lighting needs to be underground, that it needs to be made a little more clear.
I think it should all be underground.
The electrical for the streetlights would be underground, but the pole has to be there.
Or just have a statement, all or any electrical shall be underground, there will be no overhead wires.
Yeah, adequate underground street lighting.
Underground street lighting.
And don't forget cable.
Subject to the board's approval, kind of pay whatever you want, that's mandating, my opinion.
So can I ask the chair, this is probably a dumb question, because I asked a few of those, waivers, and we know some people on our board hate waivers.
Yeah.
Don't ask this, what right, they, so applicants always have a right to ask for waivers on anything.
Yeah.
That's just a God-given right or whatever.
Yeah, anything in the subdivision regs.
Right, okay.
Some of our special permit zoning bylaws allow for waivers, and that's in the earth removal.
Does it say somewhere that thou shall have the right to ask for a waiver? Does it say that?
Yeah.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, that's in this.
No, you don't have to go there, just one of those.
I don't mind. Upon request, SBG may waive the citing standards submitted requirements contained herein in the earth removal sections, interest promoting development, alternative energy serves to allow greater flexibility in design, but only upon finding that such request is consistent with the overall purpose and ten of the sections.
Yeah, it gives us.
That's for.
Gives us latitude.
Right. But anything in the subdivision, they can ask for waivers for any of the design standards. So happy to propose some of those amendments.
Okay.
For our consideration at our next meeting, and then we can decide if we want to hold a public hearing on it, if it works.
Throw out a master list of what you want to change, have us look at it and go from there?
Yep.
Make a hit list.
Okay.
Try to do it all at once?
Yep, absolutely.
In case there's more that to think about now?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, may I ask a question through the chair? Are there requirements for, not so much subdivisions, but like this, the McIntyre thing?
Mm-hmm.
For them to do plantings or whatever, like in gen, not just them, but like anyone coming in to do anything in an industrial zone, particularly if it's near a residential area, to do those kind of plant, is there like a requirement for that?
Yeah, they have to submit a landscape plan with their site plan.
Okay, and then we monitor that?
Yep. But I believe there's also the ability to waive anything for site plan. Waivers, we're putting, waive any technical requirements of section nine four three, nine four four, project involves relatively simple development or constitutes a minor plan. Nine four three is preparation of plans, and nine four four is the content of plans includes architectural landscaping, utility, topography, and drainage. All things to think ask for waivers for.
So the solar farm on Northwest Maine, or is that actually West Street?
West Street.
West Street.
Yeah.
That looks terrible. They don't maintain it, they don't, and I know we had discussed it before, but like, what is the mechanism to force them to?
To do landscaping?
Did they, did they have, did they submit a landscaping plan?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. I wasn't here for that one.
I wasn't here for that one either.
Because there's homes on either side.
Yeah, either side of the driving entrance.
Yeah, and they just don't maintain it, it looks terrible.
Sort of like that legacy circle thing, it's kind of got away from us completely, right, Mike?
I think that's something on our part to really look at it a lot harder when they come in front of us now.
I know.
And really knock back down, you know, our body is the minimum eight feet tall or this, I think anybody to save a dollar will do what they have to do just to do it, unless it's in black and white, I didn't. So I think in the future, moving forward, and we've learned on a few more specific, if we want thirty trees, each one starts at ten feet tall, black and white.
So we should be proactive. We want a, we want a landscape plan, and let's see this, and let's negotiate.
But also hold, and the biggest thing is, one thing to say it and have a print, it's another thing to have a bond or something to make them do it.
Right.
Hold something back somehow.
We could add.
That's what we need to do for now on, to hold something back until that's all taken care of, so it's not dragged out for a year or more.
Can we ask for a landscape bond or some sort of?
Under site plan review requirements, there's no, there's nothing in here that we could ask for that. However, that could be amended. In earth removal, there's bond requirements, but not in regular site plan.
And I think there should be.
Site plan review is more of an as-of right with guidance, so it's kind of tough to put a bond on something that's as-of right, but if it's a special permit for use, possibly we could put it in there.
But we do have the building.
But yet.
Right, we do, they can cease and desist.
Right.
You know, so that's pretty, has bite to it.
Yeah.
And through the chair, but that's kind of hard, because now it's all out to the fact, and that's the hard part.
And you gotta play bad guy.
You need something.
Really bad guy.
That you're holding them to the grindstone on it, and I would think it'd be smart to have it in there, you can always ask for a waiver for it.
Okay.
They can always ask the bow out or whatever.
There is language in here. Board may impose reasonable conditions, expense the applicant, including performance guarantees for multi-subjectives, so that is in there.
Just that we've never enforced it.
Yeah, that's true.
It's, you've got the, you know, when you do residential, the lot has to be done, and when we do industrial, the landscaping has to be done, and that's something for the building department and to sign off a permit to close it.
Yeah, it's consistent with our plan.
Yeah, but if we can do a bond, then that's, makes it happen anyways.
Yeah, because then there are buffer requirements.
Yeah.
For some.
Yep.
Well, we also may want to think about this whole new ADU by right.
That's on our next agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a public hearing for that.
Like, so accessory dwelling unit?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so would we impose landscaping requirements for in a budding lot if you're building an ADU, if it's, maybe, I don't know.
I know we can't really get into it yet, because it's public hearing on our next meeting, but there is a reference that they have to apply by all requirements of site plan review.
Okay.
Right, you gotta be twenty-five feet side yard, you know, certain zones.
All right, some stuff to research and.
If I could through the chair, just a quick question regarding earth removal permits, could that, those be amended as a special permit through a public hearing, or that'd be town meeting?
Yeah.
Because with what was out there, one word trigger is earth removal permit.
Yep.
And, you know, the kind of was the site plan review, that one word triggered, that whole debacle form.
Three hundred cubic yards.
Yeah, three hundred cubic yards, I think experts like.
Thousand.
Yeah, it's a crazy number, but, you know, just some of the, just more my curiosity if it could be done or.
Yeah.
If it was a town meeting.
I started putting together an earth removal bylaw at one point.
Yeah.
And then I started adding earth fill to it, since we don't regulate fill.
Yeah.
It just, it got really ugly, and it just, it just kinda gave up on it a little bit, but it's something that could resurface.
Good points in it, but there's also obviously that, you know, one word triggers, changes the whole perspective.
Yeah, one peer review notices it and calls it out and
Yeah, then the medical council backs it up, and then it becomes, not saying that you have to give everybody pass, but, you know, that one word kinda trips him up, and, but more that, more I read through it, some of the wording just seems antiquated and or excessive, so
Yeah, no, I agree. I do have a draft on it, but
Yeah.
It's more my curiosity.
Add it filled.
Commending things, you know. Started getting Maybe don't regulate fill, or maybe we just do the report, it's hard to say.
One other thing, if I can, through the chair. So it happened at Sleepy Hollow, where earth removal and the building permit became that big battle.
Yeah.
What's what, what's when, what triggers this?
Yep.
I do this, and I go back and do that without anything. Is there a way of eliminating that scenario in the future with language? Or what's the thought on that? Because, I mean, in the end game, it's gonna be removed. But yet, the way that that process all went through was a nightmare.
Yeah, so a lot of gravel companies will hide their gravel operation under the guise of a subdivision. And that's what we saw firsthand, Joseph Road, gravel company using a subdivision to remove all the material from that side. Right? That's, that's kinda how developers have been dancing around the law. So, one of the things, when he tried getting one of those lots done, we saw he was taking out, what, a hundred thousand cubic yards of earth on a hill for one property.
Yeah.
We're like, so we flagged him for an earth removal permit, but under the subdivision, like, that's, that's usually perfectly allowed, but that lot was released from the subdivision out of the covenant and then became its own thing. That's why we got it for the earth removal permit. But if he did it under the subdivision while, before the lot was released, then it wouldn't be.
Right, well, the hard part with the whole deal was the boundary setbacks.
Yeah.
Because it's completely different between the two.
Yeah.
So, everything is like having a part of spaghetti, it's all in a woven into a mess. And no matter how you pull it apart, I mean, it ended up being developed. But in the beginning, that was a nightmare.
Yeah.
I don't know if you remember going through all that. It was a total nightmare.
Yeah. So
Is there any way of setting something up on scenarios like that?
We can add the, add the earth cut, fill analysis into the subdivision regs, and they'd have to submit that with their road, right? So that we know what that volume is. They take that out with the construction of the road, but once they release the lots, those are up for individual debate with the special permit for earth removal. And we just have to button up that language, it's gotta be better.
Because, I mean, if you own a lot, you have the right to go to your property line.
Yeah.
You own it, you're paying taxes on it.
Yep. But that's the special permit, like, and that's where our permit talks about where you can build your house, that's exempt. Septic system is exempt, but the rest of the yard is not. And that's where we got him, because he was grading the entire hill and taking it all out, and that was not exempt under our regulation.
But you as an individual homeowner, though, that chair of property?
Also creating possible stormwater problems for you and your neighbors at the same time.
But, but that's where the trouble comes in.
Right.
See where I'm going?
Yeah, yeah.
That's where, to try to eliminate that hassle, that issue.
Yeah.
That's a brainstorm.
Oh, yeah, that's tough, because there's, any scenario can challenge any bylaw. There's always something out there that will challenge it no matter what.
Yeah.
And that was a great example, that was, what, twenty-five, no, eighteen, twenty, Joseph Road, whatever that one was. On that side, that was the perfect example, where he was going to cut it to a hill and put like a thirty-foot wall up, unless we asked him to grade it down, and it's just
Yeah.
What he ended up doing is create a nice big sledding hill for the neighbor kids, so
Yeah.
Looks like a whole, that whole area, it's all carved out. Anyway.
Any staff updates?
Um, I don't think so, aside from the training being postponed for the next meeting, that'll be at five o'clock, and that's for our inter子subdivision control and A and Rs. We will get a discussion. Draft decision.
Yep, decision for Twelve Depot Street.
Yep. I did find one thing that I need to amend on it, I put the board voted five-nothing to grant, but it should be a seven. Decision, should be a seven. But otherwise, I could just fix that page, that's almost a signature page to separate. It's all standard conditions for this.
I thought it would stay five-nothing, because there's a special permit.
Yeah, but we have a, we have a seven-member board. Yeah, nevermind. Sorry. So they need five of seven.
Five.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll sign that.
Yeah, we already voted on it, just need the signatures and
All right.
Got two sets of minutes.
Which somewhat, one of the sets is important, from Jen.
I went through both of them.
All right.
What do we got?
Um, September eleventh, one B. The vote passed unanimously, the last sentence.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep.
And then just the wording, I think, on the public hearing number two, where in the middle of the paragraph there, it says, two out of the six trees are in the town's right of way and stated that they are both dying and dead.
Not both.
They can't be dying and dead. So they, they are dying or dead, and or dead?
Dying or dead? I'm fine with that.
And is McCallum spelled, just two L's?
Oh, it has three L's, I didn't see that one. Yep. Yeah, that was all I had seen on this one.
Okay. Do you care to make a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes of Wednesday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
As amended?
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Okay, made by Mr. DeRosa, second by Mr. Lushman, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. September twenty-fifth?
Yep. I found one thing there.